Yeah. Do we, does Washington County even have policies about opening its public?
Cooling centers? Yep. So right now, the team is convening to determine and get a list out of cooling centers.
Great, great.
When I was a kid, it was a movie theater. A movie to get cool.
Madam Chair, we are live on YouTube and ready to go when you are.
Okay, Commissioners, got everybody, all right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday evening, June 22nd, 2021, Washington County Board of Commissioners. Clerk Moss, announcement and roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Washington County Board of Commissioners, also acting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county districts, is now meeting in this regular session, June 22nd, 2021. Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Here.
Vice Chair Thrice?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. So before I make an overview about the Board Agenda, if those of you who may have been on the Zoom call before we gavelled in, we were chatting a little briefly about the latest weather advisory. So at this stage of the game, Ms. Angie, looks like it's going to be pretty darned hot. What does that mean for our agency, Washington County Agency operations, for our community members, and similarly for Ms. Taniguchi Dennis for Clean Water Services?
Good evening, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. That's a very timely question. Just shortly before the Board meeting, I did receive an update from our emergency manager, John Wheeler. And this does have information that I believe would be helpful for the community to hear too, so I do want to take a bit of time and walk through this. So the Weather Service has issued an excessive heat watch for nearly the entire forecast area, including the coast. The watch is in effect from Friday afternoon to Monday evening. Extreme heat will significantly increase the potential for heat-related illnesses, particularly for those working or participating in outdoor activities. So for Washington County operations, our departments are working with their staff teams directly to ensure that precautionary measures are in place, from ensuring that employees are hydrated, to also opportunities for seeking refuge from the heat. Just as a precautionary and preparedness actions, it is important that we all continue to monitor latest forecasts and warnings for updates on this situation. We all should be prepared to drink plenty of fluids, stay in air-conditioned rooms when possible, stay directly out of the sun, and check up on relatives and neighbors as well during this time. Young children and pets should never be left unattended in vehicles under any circumstances. This is especially true during warm or hot weather, when car interiors can reach lethal temperatures in the matter of minutes. So once again, I know these may seem like gentle reminders, but sometimes it is important to share these out loud, to remind ourselves. So we are also going to be activating our cooling center procedures, and that information will be pushed out through Washington County communication channels within the next day. And so that is access to public buildings such as libraries and other areas. So more to come.
It's Taniguchi Dennis.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We really do appreciate the notice that we got from the EOC. It went to our risk manager, Chris Novotny. So we have communicated to the teams about the very similar things that Antonia talked about, staying hydrated, staying cool. We do have added concerns with our equipment, so the team will be working with the equipment to keep it fully running under the heat. But the team's very inventive when it comes to managing the temperatures. But we really do appreciate the advanced knowledge, and it's a bit concerning with the current estimates of what will happen. So, thank you.
Well, I can say personally that I underestimated the heat last Sunday. Went out for what I thought was a shaded bicycle ride. It was indeed shaded, and I overheated a few times anyway, so had to cut it short, and I was wiped out the rest of the day. So I am forewarned, that's for sure. So everybody be careful out there. Go ahead.
Hi, Chair. I am so excited. I get to go to Roseburg, and Friday we'll be touring the Archery Creek Fire for six hours out there in that wonderful heat with a bunch of other foresters. So, so good times.
Wow. Take lots of water and ice.
I'm sure they'll take care of it. It's pretty good.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be joining other volunteers, Washington County volunteers, at the Beaverton Pride Washington County booth on Sunday. So, yeah, I think I'll be making some icy accommodations if I can. Alrighty, well, let's all take good care of one another and check out those movie theaters as Alan was recommending. So, all right. Well, before we move on with the agenda, I just want to highlight a few agenda changes. On the consent agenda first, this being the last meeting before the change of the fiscal year, like last week, we have a pretty darned full consent agenda. Item five has been removed and will be rescheduled. Item seven, we have, compared to when the packet was initially published, we have a revised staff requested action on that item. On item eight, similarly, a revised staff requested action, and also it added the contract amendment. Item nine, very same thing, just different topic. Item eighteen and nineteen have each added the bid award memo. Item twenty-one, it's an added resolution and order plus an added attachment A. Then, under the Action menu, Section G, the first item, the title of the item was revised. And for that item, the packet also includes a PowerPoint presentation. And then, item five has been revised to add a proposed amendment comparison slide that we will talk about when we get to that item later in this evening's meeting. So those are, that's a summary of the agenda changes for today. Okay, Clerk Moss, moving on to oral communication, do we have anyone signed up to speak with us this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, seeing none, we're then going to move on to the consent agenda, which, if my count is correct, consists of 23 items. Nine items from Clean Water Services, one item from Community Corrections, one from our Juvenile Justice Team, two items from the Sheriff's Office, two items from Health and Human Services, five items from Land Use and Transportation, one item from the County Administrative Office, one item from Housing Services, and one item from Support Services.
Go for a pro of the agenda vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Before we take a vote on that, if I could, I would just like to share a comment that I had a lot of fun reviewing this consent agenda this week. I learned a lot about chemical use for water quality protection, odor control, and process and machinery use, specifically with the Clean Water Services items. And it, just all the items were really very interesting. Item seventeen from LUT, item eighteen, so hats off to staff for putting together a really great set of information that stood, every item stood on its own. So thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second to approve today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to presentations, and tonight we have a very special presentation. And who knows, maybe we have some folks in our audience who want to speak to us as well. So first, we would like to make a special presentation to two dedicated employees who are stepping down from their public service here at Washington County. The Mason Award was established in 1983 in recognition of the distinguished public service of Donald W. Mason, who was the Director of the Washington County Department of Assessment and Taxation from 1959 to 1989. Wow, that was an important year for me, 1959. This award was started by former County Administrator Charlie Cameron to recognize employees for their outstanding contributions to public service during their time with the county organization. So, Alan, I'm glad to see that you're here in the Zoom meeting, so I don't have to ask Clerk Moss to make sure you're promoted tonight. I want to acknowledge that this is your last Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting for you, Alan Rapleye, as you've been managing the County Council's office for the last 10 years. Thank you. Alan was a city attorney for Beaverton from 2003 to 2011, and was a Senior Assistant County Counsel with Washington County from 1996 to 2003. And before that, Alan was both County Counsel and Planning Director for Kirk County, Oregon. So he has a long career in public service. Alan has been a member of the Oregon State Bar since 1989. He was former Chair of the Oregon State Bar Laws, Government Law Section, and former President of the County Council Association. And I know he has a great reputation with county councils throughout this state and has been a key contributor. Alan's been an excellent attorney for our county government organization, and has served our community with distinction throughout his 31-year career. Our county, your county, has benefited from his sound legal advice throughout his tenure. On behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, we've added your name to the Mason Award in honor of your distinguished service. Alan, would you like to say a word or two?
Well, thank you very much. I'm honored and humbled. It was just by chance, I was getting coffee on Monday, and I was looking over, I seen that Mason Award and seeing those distinguished names on there, Eva Calagano for last week, and my predecessor, Dan Olson, for 10 years ago. So I didn't, certainly didn't expect it, and so I'm surprised and honored, and it's really, really very nice, and I certainly appreciate it. It's been, it's been a great to serve the county. We've always tried to have the public interest in our thoughts and our minds and everything we do, and so it's been a long road, and there's been difficult times and good times, and so, and it's been great to have good people with me who have the same mindset and want to do what's right for the public. So, again, I certainly appreciate that, and thank you very much. I'm looking forward to retirement, so.
Well, you have earned this distinction in being added to the Mason Award. You really have, and I'm so proud of you for retiring so that you can have fun, go skiing, and do all those other things you love in addition to the law.
Well, I'll have to stop and get coffee now and then, just to see my name on the wall.
You're always welcome, that's for sure.
Right, thank you.
Colleagues, and our colleagues here on the Board have all contributed to a little thank you gift for you, so when you're in the office tomorrow, Ms. Angie's going to make sure that that finds its way into your hands.
Great, I'll be in tomorrow.
That's great. Commissioners, is there anything you'd like to contribute at this time? Go ahead, Commissioner Thrice.
Well, I'd like to go first, as Alan, I've been here for two years, and you have really helped me understand so many aspects of the county, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support from you and the fact that you're always available. I know that when I call your phone, I'm going to get you, there's no question. But likewise, when you call me, I always go, okay. So, but I want you to know that I have two concerns about your retirement. One is that I'm not sure that the critters of Washington County and the whole general west side of the country are safe these days. So, so I'm a little worried about that, and I'm also a little bit worried that you may take some of my secret stashes when it comes to powder snow. So I'll be watching you, and perhaps we can go for a run or two. I would love to. So, and I really appreciate the work that you've done, and thank you so much for helping me become a better Commissioner. I appreciate it.
That's very nice. I let you know I'm a terrible shot, and I hope to see you up on the slopes.
Hunting, folks, he likes hunting. It's okay.
I can go next, whoever would like to. Alan, I've served with you when you were there, I've served with you when you were over in Beaverton, not that I was in Beaverton, I was over in the county, and now for the last several years. It's pretty remarkable to me how time goes by. We all are getting a little thinner in the hair and a little older, but I was writing down just a couple of things to say to you. One, I have always found you fair and balanced in your approach to the law, and that's important, I think, when we deal with things. You've always had a commitment and a great loyalty to this county, which I've always respected hugely. You've been responsive, I think Commissioner Thrice just mentioned that too. I mean, you've been responsive to us. You have really been enjoyable. You make very complex issues somewhat understandable, because the law is not always as clear as it needs to be. So I hear about all this retirement, I know you're going to go have some fun this summer, and then you're probably going to do a little private practice consulting, which I hope that we run across each other, which I suspect that we're in the same circle, so we might. But Alan is a very bittersweet, I'm going to miss you. It's very rare to find somebody who can work with different sets of boards, and like me, I've worked with a lot of them, and you have too, and you've done it with grace, you've done it with humility, you've done it with professionalism, and you've given really good advice. So it's, it's a very difficult evening to say goodbye, and I know it won't be, but at least in this venue. So enjoy your semi-one or two or three month, whatever it is, retirement, start doing some consulting again, but we do appreciate it, and I really do appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Roy. It's always been, you always joke with me and take the tar out of me if I was getting over my skis, but I wanted to point out that even when I was at Beaverton, I was the Chair of the Land Use Ordinance Advisory Committee for Washington County, and I was doing such a good job that the Board decided to change the charter and get rid of it. That was my, anyway, thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Well, Alan, I just, I've got a couple, couple of things you probably need to know. First of all, I have flunked retirement three times, so be very, very careful, consider your options, stay out there on the trail, and I don't know, whatever it is you do out there, ride a bike or run or something, but enjoy that. But yeah, like, like Roy said, you'll be back, we'll see you. Now, the other caveat is you can't take on any clientele that's going to sue the county, okay? So that's off, that's off the charts, or you don't get to do that one, okay? But I would echo what Pam was saying about the fact that you have been a great supporter for the two and a half years we've been on commission, and always available, always took our phone calls, and like Pam said, we always took yours, because we were going, oh crap, I don't want to hear from Alan again. But, anyway, so yeah, you've been, in just those two and a half years, you've been a great friend. So thank you for all the support and help that you've given us. Best of luck in retirement.
Well, thank you, Jerry. You're not alone in that. The department heads feel the same way when I call them too, so.
Okay, I'll go next, Chair Harrington. Alan, I've only been here six months, and I'm going to miss you. I really appreciate your support and the level of education you've provided for me in terms of Robert Rules of Procedure, how things are done, you know, the rules of being elected official, and what's public record and what's not, and, you know, and you've answered all my silly questions with humor, and in a dignified and respectful way, and I really appreciate, and you have a great sense of humor. I hope Tom can live up to that expectation and fill those big shoes. So we're gonna, we're gonna make sure of it, and I look forward to seeing you, and I'm so glad your name is added to that list.
Well, thank you, Nafisa. I said you're incredibly quick learner, and you're getting up to speed very fast, and so you're going to have no problem whatsoever. And again, I had lunch with Tom, and he's ready to go, and it's just going to be, hopefully, a smooth transition. So thanks again for the honor, I certainly appreciate it.
Well, I am really grateful that you gave us long notice of your retirement, and that you were willing to hang in there with us while we had a national search, and you've been a great supporter of the Board and of your staff and all the departments all along the way. You really have helped launch a lot of really great careers here, not only elected officials, but also lawyers. You've helped, certainly helped me feel much more comfortable with the law and legal procedures, and there is a true art there. So, thank you, Alan. I just hope that you feel terrific about your 31 years of service. It's just been tremendous. Thank you very much.
I'll just say one final word. I couldn't have done it with the fabulous staff I have. We just have a great team of lawyers there, they're all really hardworking, and they and they will serve you well in the future, so I was very fortunate that way. Thank you.
Well, we have you to thank for hiring great people, so job well done.
So Chair Harrington, we do have Clean Water Services Counsel Jerry Linder to provide a few comments to Alan.
Oh, thank you very much.
Well, I couldn't let Alan go without sort of really attribute to what a great colleague and friend he has been. He's, well, actually, first I want to see, is there any way we can do like a motion to rescind his retirement? Is, or is that?
No, that's actually not an option. We don't get veto power.
Okay, well, I do want to say that Alan is a highly intelligent and always reasonable lawyer, and I think he and I both know there's a lot of intelligent lawyers, but not that many reasonable lawyers. So it was always really a pleasure knowing I could call Alan and bounce something off him, and I think he felt comfortable doing the same with me, and it really was a special relationship that I really think benefited the, really the county and Clean Water Services to be able to have our ability to work through some issues together, always cooperative, never, never a difficult discussion. We didn't always agree, but we usually did, because, you know, right? Like you say, you've been really enjoyable to work with, and I don't want to be emotional, but I do expect we'll still maybe meet in La Choa for occasional good meal together, and happy retirement, and look forward to hearing what you do next. Thanks a lot for letting me share.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes, I've always enjoyed our lunches together, and I'd love to join you for lunch again. So it's been, yeah, it's been a very symbiotic relationship with our sister agency, and we work very closely together on the legal end of things, and everywhere else too for that.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Clerk Moss, I just want to make sure that there wasn't someone in the audience that wanted to raise their hand or express any appreciation to Mr. Rapleye this evening. We certainly have oral communication in the end, but best to check now.
Yes, does anyone listening on Zoom wish to provide any farewell comments to County Council Alan Rapleye on his retirement?
Chair Harrington, while we wait for that, I would like to. So I want to tell a story. Three weeks, well, three, four weeks in, I lose count into starting with the county, I called Alan on his cell phone, and he said, what now? We have two emergency declarations, we don't need anything else. No more, I don't want any more emergency declarations either, and then he started laughing. So we both had a good chuckle, and I share that story because of what we were all dealing with at the time. And so thank you, Alan, for all of your support, your counsel, and the humor along the way, and even laughing at my jokes, too. So I appreciate that.
Oh, you make great jokes, Tanya. It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
We have no others, Madam Chair.
Alrighty, thank you, Clerk Moss. So, excuse me, and now I'd like to hand the proceedings over to our County Administrator, Tanya Angie, so that she can recognize another distinguished public servant this evening. Tanya?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Clerk Moss, if you could please promote Sia Lindstrom into the Zoom, thank you. And I'm going to wait until she actually appears, since there's a couple second delay. Hi, Sia. As many of you know, Sia let us know earlier this month that she'll be leaving the organization this fall after 13 years of service in Washington County. Sia has led or been involved in a long and wide-ranging list of initiatives in that time. Too many to recount here, because if I recounted, we'd go well into midnight for this meeting, but I do want to mention a few. Sia led the multi-departmental process of changing the county boundary for the first time in nearly 160 years to bring urban services to the Bonnie Slope West, also known as Area 93. I recalled, starting shortly with the county, and I was like, what is Area 93? And yes, Sia was the subject matter expert there. Coordinating staff with Assessment and Taxation Department in the city of Hillsborough in support of the Board's approval of a 30-year, $100 billion economic investment agreement with Intel Corporation, helping to get the Hawthorne Watkins Center off the ground, the county's first urgent care services center for mental and health addictions, facilitating the county's diversity, equity, and inclusion think tank process in 2018, serving as the interim county administrator since 2019, and in that role assisting our last county administrator, Bob Davis, our interim county administrator, Steve Rhodes, and finally me. Sia's been a tremendous support to me as I come into this position of county administrator. Her and I joke, many times my drive home is actually with Sia, Bluetooth, hands-free, where we're connecting on things, and so she's my transition many times between work and home, and I appreciate that in our conversations. She's been welcoming, supportive, and deep knowledge of the county organization and its many, many partners. Our community has benefited directly from Sia's work. Our partner organizations have had a welcoming ambassador for collaboration, and our employees have appreciated her optimistic leadership. I have appreciated and continue to be inspired by Sia's public service mindset and commitment. To honor your service, Sia, and even though you're not leaving us until November, sometimes I think it's important to acknowledge the service of others prior to their departure, we have added your name next to Alan's on the Mason Award as a token of our esteem for your contribution to Washington County. Thank you, Sia.
Tanya, thank you so much for that honor. And Alan, I'm honored to share the stage with you too in this, as we honor your legacy of public service to Washington County. Alan, it's been a joy to work with you. You know, in my 13 years at Washington County, I have seen and been a part of a lot of change, especially in the last couple of years, right? And as we went through such a significant leadership transition, and then COVID on top of that, right? Who would have guessed? But through it all, it has been. But it through it all, it has been the inspiration of the the support of the board and of our amazing workforce that has just really seen us through. And so, Tanya, thank you for the honor of of this public service award. It means a great deal to me.
And I couldn't think of a better person to have my name next to. Well, we've been done through so many things together, Sia, so.
We have indeed, Alan. Thank you.
Do we have a moment for a few words?
Yes, please.
So I'm gonna jump right in. Sia, you are the heart and soul of our organization. You you have helped me in so many ways understand the nuances of the county. You have, you've guided me. I have missed you through this COVID time because we haven't had the opportunity to work so closely together. But my wish for you is that as you take some time in retirement, and like Jerry said, I'm not very successful at retirement either, but I hope you are. I hope that I have the opportunity to hear you play the cello. I hope I have the opportunity to go on a bike ride with you. I hope I have the opportunity to going, to go on a snowshoe event with you. I know, I know that you are excellent at balancing the the good things in life as well as the work. Well, maybe I shouldn't say that you're excellent. You try hard. But at the same time, I I just want you to know I'm I'm happy for you. Thank you for everything you've done for the county, the the people who live, work and function here. And thank you for what you've done for me. I greatly appreciate it. So, Sia. Love you, kiddo.
Other commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
I think, oh, my next, okay. See, I'm not gonna say goodbye tonight. You got some more months, but I go back. You and I and Alan probably the only ones who worked with Charlie in any length. So you all know what that award meant to him and how he really encouraged the board to to do that. But we'll say our goodbyes and, you know, before you leave. But what I want to say is thank you for the effort you put in in between our entire administrative team leaving and now hiring new ones. You, the the general public has no idea the number of hours you put in. They have no idea the contributions you've made. They have no idea how much effort that you had to put in so that we all could look a little better at what we do. You had a whole new board to deal with other than yours truly. And but you and I've always gotten along well. And I want to thank you also for your initial ban time. You, I remember, I still remember that coming up, some of us with that idea. And then Charlie ran with it and developed it. You were the first director and, as I recall, and I didn't know much about you at the time, but you you certainly took some thoughts, some random thoughts and made them soar. So anyway, I, we'll say our goodbyes later, but this this county and this, everyone in it owes a huge debt of gratitude to you for the effort that you put in the last couple of years as things kind of had to get resolved on administrative level. As we've had so many retirements, and I know you're gonna go on to do some some great things as well. And you're too young to retire, but some of us never can. We just haven't figured that concept out. Others retire and keep doing other things like Jerry has explained. I know you'll do something too. You're like Alan. You're gonna find something that's gonna be fun. So anyway, thank you for all the memories, both you guys.
Commissioner Willie, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I, it's hard to follow Roy because of the history that he has there and certainly all the great things. But see, you know, I'm gonna miss you a lot more than I'm gonna miss Alan. I can tell you that right now. Okay? So.
Yeah, but do you have Sia on speed dial the way you have Alan on speed dial?
The feeling's mutual, Jerry.
So anyway, see, you and I can certainly say our farewells a little bit further down the road. But I really do appreciate all the things that you do and and certainly all the help that you've always given me. You've always been really candid and we've enjoyed a good humorous relationship as well. So I look forward to the next few months and then we'll do the official adieu a little bit later. But thank you for all the hard work that you do put in.
Commissioner Fai, go ahead. Sia, it sounds like I'm the only one that haven't worked with you and I'm really sad that I'm getting robbed an experience with you. But best of luck and thank you for your service. I really appreciate everything you've done. I read your resignation letter and very impressive. You've accomplished a lot. And to be able to accomplish all of that and to retire early, it's it's the blessing that many of people don't get to experience. So congratulations. I wish you all the best and look forward to working with you in the next few months until you're officially off of Washington County's, what is it, clock or payroll? But I look forward to spending as much time as we can to, you know, download a lot of the history and the knowledge you have from Washington County and to learn as much as I can from you before you leave. And and hopefully you'll reach back and and we can proper do coffee in person. And thank you for the, I think I've had a couple briefings with you. So thank you for those as well.
Well, so I'll just round out the board comments before opening it up. Just as Alan is known for his humor, Sia, I think you are known for your heart. And I can say with confidence that your service to community is not done. I know that you have some exciting chapters ahead of you. Chapters to continue to make the most out of life, but also chapters to contribute to whatever community you choose to serve in whatever capacity you choose to do that. You've earned your place on the Mason Award, just as Alan has as well. And so I'm so glad that you have an opportunity to bask in that for a bit longer. And, you know, it's, I think, just as we've been grateful for Alan's continued service for us during this transition, we too are grateful for your accommodating us with a transition time as well. You did not have to do that and we are grateful for it. So, thank you. I hope you didn't feel too too roasted in our honoring you with the Mason Award here tonight.
So Chair Harrington, with your permission and because I know Sia well enough that this is as uncomfortable as she is comfortable with in this space, we will be having a celebration closer to her departure. And I just am confident there will be many that would want to provide her words. And with the long agenda, let's just hold that. So, Sia, you get to look forward to more of this. How about that? So Chair Harrington, with your permission, if I could take the opportunity to probably awkwardly hold up the Mason Award as well. And maybe we can, you can't.
Everybody to smile so I can take your picture. Okay, three, two, one, smile. Okay, I got it. I'll send it to Kevin. I think it's important to memorialize your your last, I mean, who would have ever thought that your last meeting, Alan, would be on Zoom? You're zooming out to retirement. I mean, what can we say? There are some better jokes there. Humor is not one of my strengths. Alrighty, so thank you, everyone, for joining us for those special presentations to Alan Raplié and Sia Lindstrom as we honor them with the Mason Award. And commissioners, I know it's a presentation, but I think we should take, make a spontaneous resolution to honor both Alan Raplié and Sia Lindstrom in their respective years of service, 31 years for Alan in his career and Sia Lindstrom in 13 years of service here in Washington County. Might any of you be willing to make such a motion? Commissioner Rogers, thank you, Commissioner Treese, for a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Way to go, Commissioner Treese. You only get to vote once, though. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to boards and commissions. So here we're going to, we have the opportunity to appoint two new members to the Public Safety Coordinating Council. Did you guys get that go? Okay, just me. Fernando Lyra and Rosemary Brewer to the Public Safety Coordinating Council for the term of July 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022. This is a mid-year midterm appointment.
A move? Recommended?
Motion from Commissioner Willie, seconded from Commissioner Treese. Before we take a vote, I just want to say I appreciate the follow-up on the cultural relevance experience that the applicant has provided and that what they'll bring to the committee. So thank you very much. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. All those opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have two different public hearings. The first one is a second reading. So this is where I get to turn to Mr. Raplié and saying, Mr. Raplié, could you please read the ordinance number 875 by title only, please?
Madam Chair, I would make that motion.
See? Good grief. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for making the motion to read the ordinance by title only. Second from Commissioner Willie, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Where Commissioner Treescow?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Take it away, Alan.
Ordinance number 875 and ordinance amending the exotic animal code, Washington County Code, Chapter 6.08.
Thank you, sir. So, and with that, I'm going to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, oh.
Do you want to hear a staff report, Madam Chair?
I forgot. My apologies, Mr. Covey.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Board. This is Marty Kyle, Director of Health and Human Services. And Randy does have a very brief staff report before you.
Thank you, Ms. Kyle. Take it away, Randy Covey.
Yes, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, Chair Harrington, members of the Board of Commissioners, County Administrator Angie, thank you so much for the time. Just real brief, on September 9th, as you know, of 2018, a new county ordinance that banned the keeping of a certain exotic animals and created exceptions for traveling circuses at other specific circumstances went into effect. The issue before your board tonight is the next potentially final steps in the process to amend the exotic animal code in response to citizen requests to add elephants to the list of banned exotic animals and to remove the exception for traveling circuses. On March 9th of this year, your board considered staff recommendations in support of these changes and directed staff to move forward with the formal process. The first reading of this item was during your board's June 1st, 2021 regular session. Tonight, the requested action is to conduct a second reading, which Alan has done, thank you, of proposed ordinance 875 by title only. Hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance and adopt the proposed ordinance. The recommendation of staff stands is that, and is that, your board approve ordinance 875 as presented before you today. Thank you for your time and I'm available to answer any questions that may come up.
I have just a clarifying question. This ordinance, this ordinance, if I'm correct, would only apply to the unincorporated areas of Washington County, correct?
Chair Harrington, members of the board, that is correct. Only applies to the unincorporated areas.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on the staff report? Seeing none? Oh, go ahead.
I just want to thank the constituents in my district for bringing this forward. I'm pleased that we are taking it to a vote. And I just want to say thank you to the staff for the work that you've done and the clarifying of the different types of animals that are indigenous to this area. Thank you for the work that you've done.
Great. And with that, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone signed up to speak with us tonight on this matter?
We do, Madam Chair. We have two people signed up. The first one is Kristen. Kristen? Kristen, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Great, thank you. I'm Kristen Leopard, a Washington County resident and program director for the Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries. I fully support the proposal to amend the exotic animal ordinance and ban traveling animal shows. Traveling animal acts are notorious for animal neglect and abuse. We know this mostly by way of undercover investigations, whistleblowers and eyewitness accounts. Unfortunately, the agency charged with enforcing the Animal Welfare Act is the USDA. Animal exhibitors are required to be licensed by the USDA, but a USDA license is not evidence of exceptional or even adequate animal care. To make it worse, the Animal Welfare Act itself is very weak. It establishes very minimal guidelines and fails to incorporate modern animal care practices. As a result, exhibitors can subject animals to grossly inhumane conditions, yet are still considered in compliance with the law. Worse yet, the Animal Welfare Act is poorly enforced. Even with poor enforcement of weak regulations, many exhibitors have a history of dangerous incidents as well as miserable records of animal care, including repeated citations for serious violations of the Animal Welfare Act. One example, Carson and Barn Circus, which has supplied elephants to a circus that performs in Oregon, has a long history of abysmal animal care. They were assessed a penalty of $16,000 for multiple charges of failure to safely handle elephants. There's no agency that monitors the training of animals used for performances, yet training sessions are where the most severe abuse takes place. A simple internet search will produce numerous videos showing the violence and abuse trainers inflict on elephants, big cats and other animals during behind the scenes training sessions. Finally, it's been over three years since the circus performed in our county. So prohibiting traveling animal acts will have no financial impact. Exotic animal displays don't generate meaningful economic spending and circus owners and performers don't reside in the towns they perform in. When the show leaves, they take their revenue with them. So with that, I want to thank the entire commission, especially my Commissioner Pantries, for all of your work to uphold Washington County's humane values.
Thank you, Kristen. Kristen? All right, next, Madam Chair, we have Chelsea. Chelsea, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Chelsea Davis and I'm a Washington County constituent and I'm also the co-founder of Animal Rights Collective Portland. I want to thank you so much for this opportunity to express my support for the proposed ordinance number 875, which would, as Randy was sharing, would amend Washington County Code, Chapter 6.08, exotic animals to add elephants and prohibit traveling, traveling animal acts in unincorporated Washington County. I want to start by expressing my sincere gratitude for your commission's leadership in this area and the follow-through to make it happen. It's a deeply personal issue for me that I've previously discussed with Commissioner Shouton last year before he left office. And actually, Commissioner Fai, I'm sure you don't remember, but when you were canvassing my neighborhood, I questioned you quite heavily about your your thoughts on on this issue. And I know that you're supportive, so I really appreciate that as well. Wild animals used in circuses are trained into submission through fear. Wild animals used in circuses are trained into submission through fear, intimidation, and incredible cruelty. The public is increasingly uninterested in seeing such degradation of animals, so much so that Multnomah and Benton Counties have joined with over two hundred municipalities and states across the country to ban traveling wild animal acts like we're talking about tonight. I'm so proud that Washington County could be following suit. In additional to, in addition to physical abuse, animals used in traveling shows spend a great majority of their time in extreme confinement. Elephants are constantly chained, and big cats, primates, and other animals spend most of their time in very small cages that are barely large enough for them to turn around. These traveling exotic animal shows also present serious public safety concerns, as wild animals are dangerous and unpredictable, and especially after and during years of stress caused by captivity and inhumane training practices. Public safety and animal welfare are issues that Washington County residents care deeply about, which is why I'm honored to be here tonight to again support ordinance eight seventy-five to ban traveling circus acts in our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chelsea. And we have no one else. Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close tonight's public hearing. So we have an ordinance there where we've had the second reading and the first public hearing. Do we have a motion to adopt this ordinance? We have a motion from Commissioner Trees. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Willie. Clerk Moss, could you take the role, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. This has been a while on this, so Commissioner Willie?
Here, yes.
Commissioner Rogers? Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fai?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trice?
Yes.
Chair Harrington?
And do we have any? Well, no, that was the roll call. Thank you, commissioners. The ordinance passed unanimously five to zero. I can't remember if we've had an ordinance since we've changed completely to Zoom. Were there any commissioner comments before we move on? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I think it's important that, as you noted, this is applicable to unincorporated Washington County. We need to remember that the fairgrounds is in the city of Hillsborough. However, as Alan has pointed out to me previously, that we would not book an event like this on the fairgrounds or in the event center. So while that facility is physically under the jurisdiction of Hillsborough, we still have that, certainly that control and that ability to do that. So we've kind of covered ourselves pretty well there with that umbrella, but I think that clarification is important.
Great. And thank you, Commissioner Trice, for your leadership in hearing from your constituents about their wanting the county to make sure that we do everything we can to prevent elephants from being brought on tour, so to speak, here in Washington County, as well as circuses and carnivals. So, job well done. All righty, we'll move on to the second public hearing, and this is related to our affordable housing program. And tonight, we're here to hold a public hearing on the issuance of tax-exempt bonds pursuant to requirements of the Internal Revenue Service. And there I see that we have our Director of Housing, Mr. Comey Calavar, as well as a couple of other members of his team, Assistant Director Joshua Kreitz, as well as a key housing manager Shannon Wilson with us, too. So I'd like to turn it over to you at this point, Mr. Calavar.
Good evening, Chair Harrington. Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Comey Calavar, Housing Authority Executive Director. The TFR hearing that you're about to hold tonight is a requirement of the private activity bonds, which are part of the financing for the Valfrey at Avenida twenty-six. This development was formerly called Forest Grove Family Housing. The legal requirements are very clear that we have this public hearing to give citizens an opportunity to comment, and if they have issues or grievances to voice. We have an allocation of seven point two million in private activity bonds from the state treasury. So this is the last step here before we close and start construction. The Valfrey will provide thirty-six units of affordable housing in Forest Grove. We are excited that we are at this stage to close on the second affordable housing project in Worthing County, the second metro bond-funded affordable housing in Worthing County. We are ready to get this project underway. You know, a lot of work for the housing team getting here, and we obviously have all thanks to the legal department for their work with all the paperwork and all the legal citations you see in the reports. And before I keep quiet, the Valfrey at Avenida twenty-six was named after Val Valfrey, former executive director, twenty-four-year Air Force veteran, U.S. Air Force veteran, former Forest Grove City Councilor, and all-around gentleman, and we are excited to name these thirty-six units after him for his tireless efforts on behalf of affordable housing in Worthing County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calavar. You know, it is, it is wonderful that Mr. Valfrey is being recognized for his long-distinguished multiple careers, as you mentioned, first in the military and then serving here in Washington County as your predecessor is the Director of Housing. Affordable housing is something that he has worked very hard on, not only here in the county, but also in his service at the state level, as well as as a city councilor in Forest Grove. So at this stage of the game, I will open a public hearing as required pursuant to the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen ninety-six. Clerk Moss, are there any members of our community who either have signed up or can indicate through raised hand that they wish to testify at this time?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up. I'll give anyone a moment to raise your hand if you wish to provide public comment on this item. I am not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
All right. And with that, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask the commissioners for a motion to adopt a resolution and order approving the housing authority issuance of tax-exempt bonds, as you can see in our packet, in the matter of approving tax-exempt bonds of the housing authority of Washington County that will finance the Valfrey at Avenida twenty-six.
The moved.
Seconded with great appreciation to our staff.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Commissioner Trees. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, and thank you, team, for joining us this evening and for all the work that you've put into this to make sure it gets done right, so that you can all be successful in all of the details that you handle to make more affordable housing available, more affordable homes here in our Washington County community. We're very proud of you. Next, we're going to move on to the action slate for the evening. There are five different action items for tonight. The first is related to what we call our long-range work, our long-range planning work program. And I know that our team has worked very hard on this to put together proposals and solicit public comment. So at this stage of the game, looks like I've waited long enough, so Clerk Moss has had the opportunity to advance our team members. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Roberts, our great Director of Land Use and Transportation.
Thank you, Chair and commissioners. You've been briefed a couple of times already on this topic, so we're not going to do an extended presentation tonight, but I do want to ask Teresa Terniak, our Principal Community Planner, to go ahead and walk you through just a quick recap of public comments that we received on the work program. And I understand from the work session this afternoon, there was an interest in a rural tourism topic, so Teresa is prepared to address that as well. And we're all available, Teresa, myself, and Andy Back are Planning and Development Services Manager, are available to talk through that and answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Good evening, Chair Harrington and commissioners. Teresa Terniak, Principal Community Planner. We're here tonight to ask for board approval of the long-range planning work program and for authorization to file the ordinances that are included in the work program. And just a reminder, the work program we're discussing is only for long-range planning, which includes community and transportation planning. So we do this work program each year to make sure the work we propose to do aligns with our state and regional requirements, as well as the board's priorities, and to the extent that we can respond to requests from the public. The work program is organized in tiers, with tier one being the highest priority work and the work that we plan to, the tasks that we plan to work on this year. Tier two is either slightly lower priority or on a little later schedule. And then tier three is really more placeholder items that we would like to do in the future, but we at this time don't have the staff and/or the funding to do. A lot of times, we seek grant funding for tier three items. Next slide, please. So we are at the end of this timeline. We started in April with the release of the draft for thirty-day comment period. We did go out and discuss via Zoom with the CCI, the Planning Commission, the Home Builders, the Westside Economic Alliance during that thirty-day period. June first, we were here at the board work session, and we did go through the thirty-six public comments that we received and the recommendations that we had. And so this, this action tonight will memorialize what it was that we discussed. There is a staff report that we did, and that explains everything in much more detail. So, next slide, please. So a quick refresher on what's in tier one on the work program. The ongoing programs and projects is about a third of our workload. That includes all the things we have to do to keep, keep things running, including supporting boards and commissions, doing transportation modeling, plan amendments, annexations, our geographic information system work, among many other things. Regional, state, and federal coordination is also a pretty big portion of our work. We work with Metro and ODOT, and this is where we have a number of the alphabet soup of different groups that we work with. We work with the different cities that, as they're doing their planning as well for new urban growth boundary areas. We develop urban planning area agreements with how to work together with those jurisdictions, and so that, that is a good part of our work. The comprehensive planning short term is a lot of what you will see this year on, on the agenda for ordinances. And so this includes our middle housing work, the HB two thousand and one implementation as we're required to do by state law, that needs to be adopted by the end of June of next year. So you'll be hearing about this through work sessions and then hearings into next year. There's some follow-up on significant natural resources, including working on those two appeals. We'll have transportation system plan updates, short-term rental license regulations, among a number of other things. On the comprehensive planning long-term or multi-year, these are things that, like the trails planning, that are, they'll go over multiple years. We just continue doing them as, as we are needed to do them. We'll look for funding as we can as well. The County Y Transit Study is on there, Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program or MISTIP, that'll be one that the board will be looking at quite a bit, too. Go to next slide, please. We did receive thirty-six comments on the work program, and in the work session, we went over those comments in some detail, including the planning commission's input. The staff report does go over the comments in detail and the staff's responses, so I won't do that here, but I'm happy to, and or Stephen and Andy, we're happy to review any that, that the board would like to talk about. What we do between issuing the draft and then the final is we review the comments that we receive. We consider the board's input at the work session, and then we do a much more detailed review of staff resources and somewhat ground truth, what we have the capacity to do. So that's, this is the stage where we put numbers of staff to each of the tasks, and sometimes that means that things move around a little bit. And so that's what happened here. We are recommending that a couple additions be made to tier one, based on things that we heard from the public. So participating in the county climate action planning efforts would be part of our ongoing work, coordinating with Beaverton on the urban service area agreement, adding that to the work that we do on the urban planning area agreements. And then we did already have a transportation system plan ordinance that was going forward, and so we did get a request from Sherwood to add the stock and employment area east-west collector to that, so that will, that will be part of that work. As far as tier two, then, we did add a task to tier two to amend our community development code to allow conversions of existing hotels and motels to affordable housing and shelter. And this is one that state law changed this past year. It was retroactive, actually, to the beginning of the year. We do have at least one project moving forward right now, and what we're able to do is directly apply state law, and through that process, we get a sense of maybe what to include in the regulations. And then we can also see during this time what works well, what has worked for other jurisdictions. And so we're recommending that we move forward with changing our regulations next year. Since we can directly apply state law, it won't hold any projects up, but it'll allow us to, to better think through what our regulations might include. And then the, probably the biggest change is that we're, initially, we were, we had moved up the revisiting rural tourism study that's been on tier two. We moved it up to tier one in the hopes that we could do that with the board, and what, after kind of a lot of soul-searching, we, the, the staff person that worked on the rural tourism study and knows all the nuances of the rural regulations, and particularly in, in the area of rural tourism, is also my primary staff person on HB two thousand and one. And so just since the timing of that is required by state law, we're recommending moving this down, back down to tier two. If there is a way that we can bring anything forward toward the end of the fiscal year, you know, we would, we would do what we could to do that, and/or it would be the first thing out of the gate after we get that adopted. It would just take a while for anyone else to, to learn it, and so that's why we're recommending moving that down. And then we did have, oh, and just also kind of echoing Commissioner Rogers' statement that it's, the rural regulations are very complex and that it would be a very controversial topic, so it wouldn't be kind of an easy one to sort of check off. And yeah, so that's our, our recommendation there. And then there were a couple items from, one was from the CCI and one was from and one was from a number of community members about gas stations in the neighborhood commercial district and then lighting standards for dark sky. And those are two items that they, they have some merit, but they, I think, need to be part of a comprehensive review of our, our code. And so we put them in as sort of line items when we do, eventually do an audit of our community development code. So we didn't want to lose those, but they aren't things that we believed we could work on right now. So those are the primary changes to, from the draft to the final. So if I could get the next slide. So our recommendation at this point is that with the changes that are included in table one, that we recommended the board approve the final work program and authorize the filing of tier one and two ordinances as shown in that table. And with that, I will stop and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? And I would look to you, Commissioner Willie, as well, as we had just been discussing the, earlier this afternoon, the rural tourism task, task. And for myself, I know I've been interested in that, but I appreciate the, hearing the presentation brought to life since I read it on the weekend, that I can't have everything I want, darn it. It's like having to balance the budget and balance the checkbook. But anyway, I, I'm not speaking for you. What do you, what are you thinking?
Well, actually, I sincerely appreciate, Teresa, that, and Stephen, your consideration for this. I realize this is not an easy decision to make, certainly lots of homework. And so the fact that you have kind of got it top of mind for tier two, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. And I'll be able to communicate that to the constituents and certainly convey the, the complexities that we're going to have to go through that. So no, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. I know that, that you have more work than you can feasibly accomplish. And so as a matter of fact, I thought, and I, you know, I need you to correct me on this. I thought that you actually loaded up tier one with 125% of work and then hoped that you could accomplish 100% plus. Is it, do you, I mean, it's kind of like MSTIP money, you know? We always do 150% of money available. Do you load up tier one like that? Or do you just try and keep it with what you believe to be reasonable and what you can accomplish?
I'll do a quick jab at that, and then if Andy or Stephen want to say anything. But we, I think we're oversubscribed by 6% in our estimates right now. So we try to be close to it. Usually, we're a little bit over. And sometimes what that means is that the work takes a little bit longer or something is delayed a little bit more. And Andy, I see your hand is up.
Well, yeah, I just want to echo that, that. We know things change over time. You know, if we were omniscient, we would, you know, predict this to the T. But a lot of the things are, are variables that are outside our control. So by oversubscribing tier one a little bit, at least we have the sense of the priority of the board for the things that, if things fall off a little bit, we're still going to focus on, on tier one. And in this case, you know, if, if a lot falls off, then we can get to the rural tourism item.
Other commissioners, any questions or comments?
I have one. On item 2.2, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we may not get to that. That, that's an issue that as we attempt to increase our inventory, and it's a, these conversions, I think, is really the, what we want to do. It's a lot less expensive than building. Is that a major amount of work? Tell me what your thought is. We're trying to increase our inventory. We have some money to do it, and, and we're not taking that task up any too soon.
So that is the one, Commissioner, that we, we have actually already started to implement. It was retroactive to January 1st of this year. So what we do in those kind of situations is we take what's in state law and we directly apply it and use that as our regulations. And so that's, yeah, so that's what we're doing in this case. And part of doing that is then it helps us sort through what might make sense to put in our regulations. And, you know, we can work with, with housing and sort that through a little bit more before actually coming up with the, the ordinance. So actually, it was with, with the help of current planning that we sorted through, maybe that's better to wait a little bit since they could directly apply it and, and sort through what would be the best level of regulation so that we're not over-regulating, we're doing it within the state law requirements and as helpful as we can be to help the process along.
Teresa, just to follow up, just so I clearly, clearly understand, following state law is not going to impede. If, if there was, if housing came and had a particular conversion that they wanted to do, we would work very hard to make that happen. We're not waiting until 2020. Okay, all right.
Yes. And we actually, there is already at least one project in the pipeline going through current planning right now, and that's, that's being, I think, done as quickly as possible. But understanding it's a very high priority.
Other commissioners, questions or comments? No, seeing none. I have a question, and then I have a comment. On, in the report on page 11 of 14, under the comment item seven, middle housing comments, on the staff report, the comment is about the reducing or waiving payment of the transportation development tax or TDT for accessory dwelling units within the unincorporated areas. I believe it applies to, the request would apply only to unincorporated areas. In the last sentence of the staff response, you say staff would need board direction to consider any changes to these policies. Are those, is, is this question something that is part of the work program around middle housing? Or is this above and beyond what you're already thinking?
So TDT, and much finer minds know much more about TDT than I do. But TDT, actually, I think the policies do apply across the county because it is also the same thing charged within the cities as well.
Right. So I, I, but we would have to work, I, I believe we would have to work with the cities with regard to uniformity.
Yeah. And I think without board direction, at this time, we wouldn't move forward with it as part of the initial part of the HB 2001. Because I think in the past, there, there hasn't been interest. And so if, if there is, then we can definitely move forward with discussions on that.
And I, I'd want to add, under the HB 2001 work, we have an obligation to consider things like reductions in SDCs and TDT. So at a minimum, there'll be a, a, you know, brief discussion with the board. And if there's interest, then we'll take the next step. But at a minimum, we have to have a discussion with you that, that has evidence that at least we considered it.
Well, I would appreciate it if you had the opportunity of discussion with the technical advisory committee to WCCC, as well as all of the, the city councils and mayors to see if this is something that they are interested in seeing some level of uniform, uniformity. It's not to say that we would be prepared to do the work this work-planning fiscal year season to follow up on that. But while we're, while we're doing the work, if possible, to ask them, great. And then go from there. Does that seem reasonable? Or am I asking for something that does have a work impact?
I think asking the question certainly doesn't engage in interest. That's, that's a simple enough task for us to take on, for sure. And then I think the, the, the follow-on questions, that, that gets complicated because the TDT was adopted as a tax. There's the potential that certain changes may require it to go back to the voters versus some things that your board can change, you know, legislatively. So we need to work through that with county council. And clearly, we need to just make sure all of our partner cities were on board with any, any recommended changes, too. But we'll certainly gauge interest, and we can report that back to the board.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. So I'll just say, I appreciate the thoughtful planning that goes into putting a draft, work-planning, a long-range planning work plan together, and then putting that out for public comment and for your thoughtful staff responses. I really appreciate it. And that includes the inquiries that you made to both Clackamas County and Multnomah County that you've listed on page eight. I want to make sure that I am able to sign, you know, sign up to do my, my part of this and the homework as well. So when you do the work of those issue papers that you talk about, it would help me if you could give me an advance notice, like a month ahead of time, that something is coming so that I've got it on my radar, because I read those. I like to learn from the work that you do. So it'd be really great to, to have that if it's, if it's possible, that would be great. So are there any other board questions or comments? Seeing none, commissioners, we have a recommendation before us from our team to approve the 2021, 2022 Long-Range Planning Work Program as outlined in the staff report. And so I'm looking for a motion to move forward to authorize the filing of an ordinance for tier one and tier two tasks where prior authorization does not exist. What are the wishes of the board? We have a motion from Commissioner Willie, a second from Commissioner Teresa. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. We'll next move on to action item G2, to conduct the first reading of another ordinance. So this stage of the game, I need to ask for a motion to read this ordinance by title only. I have a motion from Commissioner Willie. Do we have a second? A second from Commissioner Teresa. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Rapli, could you read this ordinance by title only?
Yes. Ordinance number 873, an order submitting Washington County Code Title 14 to update chapters 14.04 and 14.12 for the consistency with state regulations to repeal chapter 14.08, Order 76, Resolution Order Number 70-312, Resolution Order 71-29, Ordinance 130, and Order 181 related to swimming pools, and to amend Order 491 to reflect repealed ordinances and resolutions and orders.
Thank you, Mr. Rapli. All that to just get out of the business of regulating swimming pools. Do I need to ask a motion for having, scheduling the second reading in the first public hearing for July 20th, 2021?
Yes, that'd be best.
Commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for her motion. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Willie. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. So we'll come back to swimming pools on July 20th. All righty, now to our third action item. And this is on the Supportive Housing Services Revenue Sharing Agreement with Metro. And I believe for this, we're going to welcome some of our staff members for a staff report. Clerk Moss?
Give me one second, Madam Chair.
No worries. Perhaps Mr. Colivar, Mr. Kreitz, and Ms. Larson.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I will start. My name is Comey Calavro, Housing Director. It's a huge pleasure to be with you tonight to update you on the revenue sharing agreement. As you know, the work is underway to implement the Metro Supportive Housing born with our partners in Clackamas and Multnomah. We are bringing this action to you to help us keep the work going. This is a short-term revenue sharing agreement that will be enabled funding to be transferred from Metro to the counties and also enable us to enter into short-term interfund loans. As always, it's a pleasure giving you this update. We're making an impact. We are working with community partners. And we are excited to do this next step. With that, I'll turn it over to Josh and Jeff to walk you through the staff presentation. And then we'll answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. I think we do have a presentation that should be coming up here any morning, any minute here. And just for the record, my name is Josh Kreitz. I'm the Assistant Director for the Housing Department. Would it be helpful if I, Clerk Moss, if I pulled up the presentation, or is that something?
I don't see a presentation for the housing, and I don't see it in the packet.
In the packet around page 381, well, of 450, I printed it from the early packet. So it's most definitely here in our packet tonight. Let me see if I can tag the page for you.
Yeah, and I, I can't share my screen. It's disabled, or I just pull it up.
Josh, one sec. You should be able to share now. Josh, go ahead and try it.
Can everyone see my screen? Okay, great. All right. Well, again, I'm Josh Kreitz, and the Assistant Director for the Housing Department. I'll go ahead and dive right, and it's a very short presentation this evening. So our agenda is just really to go over the intergovernmental agreement update where we're at, the SHS Revenue Sharing Agreement overview, and then the accountability timeline and next steps. As you may recall, the intergovernmental agreement between Metro and the counties is really that relationship to help us establish and define the roles and to define the terms of this long-term agreement that we're going to be in over the course of the next decade. Including that, included within that is Metro, you know, as the tax collector, distribution and regional oversight, the counties doing program implementation, the regional oversight committee who's providing oversight and accountability, and of course, the tri-county advisory board who's providing coordinated county investments and program alignment. The IG will also define the terms, such as the eligible uses, administrative costs, and financial and legal terms, and of course, those accountability procedures and processes. And of course, those accountability procedures and processes. So we wanted to provide a very short update for you. The IGA itself is a little delayed, but the county and Metro is having really productive discussions and continue to track on along these measures. And it's legal, finance and program staff have been working really diligently on it. As I mentioned, the final draft is delayed. It's now anticipated late summer, early fall. An interim agreement is of course needed to help ensure that we can launch this program July first of twenty twenty-one. I think Jess will show that project timeline that we, we always like to point to, to see where we're at. County staff work groups, again, we continue to meet weekly until, until this draft is finalized. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jess Larson now and I'll continue to drive the presentation for you, Jess, with prompts.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening, Chair, Board Members. It's a pleasure to be with you. For the record, my name is Jess Larson. I'm the Supportive Housing Services Program Manager. And yes, just again, continuing briefly here with this or continuing with this brief presentation for you this evening. So what is before you this evening is a revenue sharing agreement. It's essentially to act as a short term intergovernmental agreement with Metro to allow, allow for the programmatic work to begin July first. It would be in effect until October first, roughly three months with the option to extend. If further time is needed to continue those negotiations for the IGA, though at this time it's not anticipated that it would take longer than that. Then the purpose of the revenue sharing agreement would be that it enables quarterly allocations of program funding to be released from Metro to Washington County. It would, it would require that the county that we will implement those program funds consistent with our local implementation plan that they have already approved and consistent with what will become the future terms of that longer, bigger intergovernmental agreement. It also, very importantly, clearly states that any initial program, programmatic costs that we are investing into the supportive housing services program will be absolutely eligible for reimbursement with the future funds that we expect to receive. So that is the content essentially. It's a very brief document. I think it's a total of three pages, including the signature lines for your consideration this evening. And next slide, please. So as a reminder, the importance of getting this program up and running off the ground as planned for July first, as we're working towards significant impact and goals here in Washington County through this program. So again, you've heard it before, we'll say it again because it's very exciting. We expect to achieve five hundred supportive housing placements in year one. An additional five hundred households who will be helped to achieve and maintain housing stability. And we expect to create one hundred year round shelter beds and by adding to our current capacities. And then of course, always a reminder that capacity building is getting underway for our culturally specific network especially. And we are committed to ensure that all of our housing outcomes will demonstrate that we are advancing racial equity through our program. So that is the vision and goal of the program and being able to be successful in our year one goals is reliant on being able to start the program as planned on July first. Next slide, please. So here is that outline of our accountability timeline. This one describes that start date, which is just upon us next week. And then quarterly reports that will be expected and a part of our ongoing programmatic work as starting in the fall. And then I won't get into all of these details, but this is the, this is basically the essence, the essence of the annual and quarterly reporting that requirements that will become a part of the intergovernmental agreement and how you will know. And we will be sharing the success and outcomes of the program over time. Next slide, please. So we are expecting to return for an engagement with you later this summer for that, as soon as that intergovernmental agreement is available for your review and consideration as a near final draft before we bring it back to you for your final, its final consideration. And then of course, October, October will be our first quarterly report. So those, that's just a quick glance at what's coming. So I think that concludes this presentation and we turn it over to you for your consideration of the action on the revenue sharing agreement.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this point? Questions or comments? Seeing none, staff, I'll just say thank you very much for the memo that was included as part of the packet. I think it does a really good job of explaining the role of the intergovernmental agreement or the IGA. All very helpful information. And I appreciate all of the work that the three of you, in addition to others here, have done across the organization to get this program going with best practices, great community engagement. You have accomplishments already, significant accomplishments. And that's before the service suite has really kicked off, right? You got the LIP done, reviewed, adopted by us, the Metro SHS Oversight Committee, the Metro Council. That included a very extensive community engagement with service providers. The completion of the RFPQ that entertained, received forty different applicants and you've approved or pre-qualified, I think might be the right term, thirty-eight different sets of vendors for that. And I know you're working hard with your tri-county regional peers to make sure that we're all working together to solve this really hard problem while also building up the workforce that is needed and to also ensure that we have equity centered in all of this. So go team, go. I think it's important that we work together to make sure that the finance resources are in place for you to get going with this while the revenue collection lags. Given that this is a brand new program, not insurmountable by, at all, but just part of the scheme of, of a new program and a new finance scheme. So seeing no additional board questions or comments, I would ask for a motion to approve Washington County Supportive Housing Services Short Term Revenue Sharing Agreement with Metro. I see a motion from Commissioner Trese. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the fourth item. It's the fourth and fifth items both relate to solid waste and recycling. The first deals with administrative rules. So Mr. Moss, if you would please advance Marnie Kyle and I believe Thomas Eggleston. And they may call on others to join us this evening. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Kyle. You're on mute, sorry. Hey, at least one of us has to do it every meeting, right?
Somebody has to do it every Zoom call, so there you go. I did it for you. Anyway, Marnie Kyle, Director of Health and Human Services. And both of the next two action items are solid waste and recycling. And so I'm going to turn it right over to Thomas Eggleston to lead us through briefing. Thank you. And also available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Marnie. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. My name is Tom Eggleston. I'm the Division Manager for the Solid Waste and Recycling Division in the Health and Human Services Department. The first item for us this evening related to solid waste is in regards to our solid waste and recycling administrative rules. I'll go ahead and deliver a quick verbal staff report and go from there. The solid waste and recycling administrative rules establish the standards by which garbage and recycling collection service is provided in unincorporated Washington County. Over time, it has become apparent that certain provisions within the administrative rules needed to be clarified or other subject matter topics added. The promote, proposed amendments before your board this evening are shown in your agenda packet as exhibit A to the resolution and order. Topics addressed in these proposed rule revisions include equity related considerations such as a declaration of the intent to use an equity lens and the oversight of the garbage recycling collection system. Requirements that personal information needed to start or change collection service does not have unintended consequences for historically marginalized community members. Requirements for service providers to train staff on bias reducing strategies. And requirements for service providers to offer access to translation services for community members. The proposed revisions also include rules related to apartment and condo community service provision specifically setting minimum service levels on a per unit basis, setting color coding standards for garbage and recycling containers, ensuring garbage and recycling containers are accurately labeled. There are also additional minor amendments and updates outlined in the staff report. The proposed rules were presented to the garbage and recycling advisory committee on their April eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Committee voted unanimously to recommend that your board approve the proposed changes. Staff recommends that your board approve the proposed amendments to the solid waste and recycling administrative rules as set forth in exhibit A of the resolution and order. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggleston. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? I, I just have one comment and I've had the opportunity to meet with the Washington County Haulers Association. And I appreciate their work through their association to leverage resources for training for the business owners, their managers on equity, diversity and inclusion. And then they're taking those resources and ensuring that they're training their workforce as well. And I just appreciate the level of thoroughness that our staff members in, you know, our legal team as well as on the departmental side do to make sure that we have a good set of administrative rules that get the job done, adhere to regional requirements as well. So thank you very much. So at this juncture, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution and order to amend the solid waste and recycling administrative rules as set forth in exhibit A of the resolution and order. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Willie. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Well, moving on to another solid waste and recycling matter, now we're talking about money. We need to look at the rates for our next collection year. And I know our staff's done a great job of doing a lot of study. So I'll ask them if they have a presentation for us tonight.
Thanks, Chair Harrington. We have a quick verbal staff report and then we are aware that there are a few amendments that might be on the table from various commissioners. And we have included a presentation PowerPoint slide in the agenda packet that can be displayed for that discussion after the verbal staff report. So I'll go ahead and deliver my staff report and we'll go from there. The Washington County maintains sanitary service certificates for nine private haulers that provide garbage and recycling collection services throughout unincorporated Washington County. As the certificate system does not allow it for a competitive pricing system, it is the county's responsibility to set fair and reasonable rates. To achieve this, every year, the solid waste and recycling division conducts an annual rate review of garbage and recycling collection services. We employ a cost based system to set collection rates. Adjustments are considered after reviewing costs and revenues included in detailed cost reports that are submitted to the county each year in March. This year, staff have maintained the current rate review practices and are proposing adjustments to achieve a ten percent return on revenue for the collection system. Upon analysis of the detailed cost reports, as outlined in your staff report, staff found that the system is currently operating at a seven point one percent return on revenue, short of the ten percent target. Looking closer at each line of service, residential, commercial and Dropbox, we see that much of the revenue shortfall is occurring in the residential sector. This trap finding tracks well with data showing increased materials collected from households and the amount of time service providers have spent collecting those materials in the residential sector. Additionally, in December twenty twenty, Metro approved a disposal fee increase in response to the negative impacts of COVID nineteen on incoming tonnage at their facilities and the increased operating expenses. As a result, beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, our service providers will begin paying higher disposal fee costs. Those costs add additional upward pressure to rates. And if not accounted for in this year's rate review, may result in the need for additional substantial increases over the next few rate cycles. To account for the increases in revenue needed to return the system to ten percent return on revenue and to offset the disposal fee increases expected to occur as of July first, twenty twenty-one, as outlined in the staff report, staff are recommending eleven point seven, eleven point four percent increase in residential rates, a four point two percent increase in commercial rates and a two point nine six percent decrease in Dropbox rates. Staff are further recommending additional yard debris cart rate increase to four dollars and twenty-four cents per month, commercial container cart clean out rate of sixteen dollars per occurrence. And that effective March, April first, twenty twenty-two, commercial food scraps collection becomes a bundled service at regular garbage collection rates, along with recycling, to align with the implementation of the business food scraps collection requirement. The garbage and recycling committee met to review the proposed rate adjustments at their May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rate adjustments included in staff's recommendation. Staff are also aware of potential amendments to the recommended rate adjustments that were brought forward for discussion and are prepared to answer any questions that your board may have. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Well, let's start first with questions from the staff report. Okay, seeing none. Clerk Moss, at this time, could you please display the slide that staff put together for us? There you go. We can see it there. So what I understand, we have a staff recommendation as Thomas, Mr. Eggleston has summarized for us verbally and it is shown here in the leftmost column. We had the opportunity to discuss various rate options in a work session just very recently. And there we heard comments from both Commissioner Willie as well as Commissioner Phi. And it's my understanding that they've had the opportunity to engage with staff on those. We had at least three commissioners willing for staff to bring forward this current staff recommendation on the rates. And I'll leave it to both Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Phi to represent their own amendments. But I think before we entertain amendments, we need to get a main motion on the table in order to have that there for discussion before we amend it.
Madam Chair, I'd move for the staff recommendation.
Do we have a second? So I'll second that motion so that we, I mean, not only do I, am I comfortable with the staff recommendation, but I certainly want to make sure we have a motion on the table for discussion. So commissioners, we have a motion on the table. What are your, what are your thoughts or wishes?
I will start since I initiated this from my proposal. And it is, this is, this is not an easy calculation to do. So I propose that I, I look at these three levels of service independently. And what my conversation with the haulers subsequent to that is that not sure that's really a fair way to evaluate that. So in other words, I look at residential. Our goal was ten percent. And, and that's what my objective was. I look at commercials, same thing, it's above it. And then the lockbox or the Dropbox is, is kind of separate as well. So when you bundle all those together and if our objective is ten percent, my proposal is nine point six two percent. What additional information though, that I found out is that each of the haulers do not have a proportionate allocation or business product where each one Where each one of them have commercial for that matter, or Dropbox for that matter. We've got a couple of haulers. That have a significant amount of residential and very little commercial and Dropbox. So when we start talking about. Adjusting a rate with a overall objective, then they may actually suffer more than. The larger haulers who have a good blend of all three of these. So. I've had to really kind of think this thing through, but what I did is I went through and said. I want to get each one of these to much more closer to our 10% and certainly overall. At our 10%. So that's how I came up with a proposed increase for residential of $2.31. Again, my, my whole focus was that I felt very strongly that we needed to, as a minimum, cover the metro increases. So that our, our haulers in Western County didn't have to absorb those, those additional costs that were basically imposed on them. So that was where I went with mine. So that's how I got with a $2.31 per month for a 32 gallon, which is a 9.9% increase. I left commercial exactly where the staff had proposed it. Actually, the staff had proposed a decrease, I believe. No, they had proposed the same $11.05. So I was good with that. And then the Dropbox, I proposed that being. The same as well. As you can see from Thomas's recalculation there, the overall is 9.62. So I was. That was acceptable to me. So again, every once in a while, my, my mathematics and my counting brain kicks in and. And kind of messes things up and, but this is where I'm, that's my proposal for increases.
So if I might, you started with saying you. You were following the similar scheme of looking at each line of service independently. But this presentation veers away from each line of service being given that 10%. So.
I evaluated it. I, I, you're exactly correct, Chair. I looked at it on a line by line basis and then I threw them all back together again and said, what's my overall? So maybe I conflicted my own self here, but.
Well. Yeah, a little bit. I think in my mind, but okay, I, I, I've, I've heard you present your proposal. I understand.
I think, yeah, overall, I just didn't want to see an 11.4% increase on residential. And I think that was my biggest pushback and why I proposed something different. But anyway. This is not a hill to die on. I just, I just wanted to toss it out there as maybe as an alternative.
Commissioner Phi, would you like to present your amendment?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Mine is pretty simple. We are working very hard to overcome and recover from this pandemic. And, and at the same time, we're still in a pandemic year in time. And I think. It just doesn't seem right to. Go what we did last year when we were also in a pandemic. And that's why I was proposing that. We do not change anything or doesn't increase. And I think the county can. I understand the external costs coming and, and what we need to do. I think that as we had a conversation this morning or was it this afternoon? Around what we're going to use for our ARPA money and, and the discussion that, you know, it morphed from that. I just think. That I think we can, the county can work really hard to figure out how we can offset that cost and not really overburden people. The eviction moratorium is coming off and, and people are going to have to pay rent in July. Yes, there are services and support available assistance, but we also know underutilizations of services such as that. So. I think that we just, we, I, I believe that we have a moral responsibility to protect and to really help people as much as we can. And just apply the same as last year and consider this as a pandemic year as well and say, we're not going to increase. So I vote for that and. I hope you'll join me in not increasing the, the rate this year as well.
Okay, well. I, I've, I've certainly heard the presentation on both amendments. I didn't want to make comment at the very beginning. But I would like to share my own personal comments at this point. Yes, the pandemic hit our community in 2020 and we did not entertain rate changes last year. But all the while, our garbage haulers kept going. They kept showing up at our homes. They kept showing up to service businesses and they kept taking those requests for drop boxes. They were there. And I remember back in March. And the, the weeks of our shutdown, a lot of comments about how we were grateful that. When all was changing around us, we appreciated that the garbage still got picked up, the garbage man, the garbage truck, the garbage. Collectors still came and took that stuff away. And we were generating a lot of it. All during that time, they never cut service. And that was all voluntary. We did not. Have to ask them to do, do that, nor have they to this day entertained cutting service for a failure to pay. These are business people, just like a restaurant, just like other businesses. And they deserve to have their costs covered and to, in this landscape, they have these franchise areas. Or their certificate areas, as Thomas reminds us of, and the composition of each of these areas varies. So there's a different mix of residential, a different mix of commercial in each of these areas. And the companies themselves are of different shapes and sizes. Some service mostly rural areas, whereas others service some more densely populated urban. Unincorporated areas of Washington County, whereas others are spread out. Other, some neighborhoods, people have no problems paying their bills, while in other neighborhoods, people are hurting from this pandemic. So I don't think we should be holding the rates steady for another year in a row. While our haulers are experienced increased charges for being in business. And I also think that sticking to our current practice on the 10% rate of review, remember. That's set looking backwards, right? So this is set based upon looking at their, their business books. Looking backwards in time with the exception of the metro rate increase. Versus looking forward in terms of where cost of operation will be for this next year. So as one, I remain comfortable in sticking with the staff recommendation. And leave the floor open for other commissioner comments. And if wanting to make motions to amend the motion that is on the table.
I can make a couple of comments. I will take them in order as they're on my screen and I'll call them the. By amendment and the Willie amendment. For Commissioner Phi, I think it's a big heart. I understand why you want to do what you want to do. But these haulers are people too. They were very gracious last year and not having any increases. They have to feed their families. They have fuel cost increases. They have. Cost of living in, cost of living increases. They have metro increases. It is frankly not fair to an industry to try to somehow cap them simply because they're a captive industry. I. I, I, I understand and I understand your compassion and feel for it, but I can't get there. And on the Willie amendment. I, I think Jerry did a great job of going through and analyzing. I, I still struggle though at this last. Eleventh hour of trying to tease out, you know, who does residential, who does commercial, who does Dropbox, because he. The routes are so different and frankly, there's, there's going to be winners and losers in there. So I appreciate the effort. I just think it's very difficult without doing an analysis, not overall, but by hauler and say. Well, if, if your route is all residential, are you getting hurt with that proposal? Versus if there's a blend and we're acting as though they're all blend. And I know some of them are not that way. So I, I remain with the staff recommendation. In my conversation with the haulers, like everyone else's, I. Certainly cautioned them not to do this skip a year again. I mean, it's, it looks like a massive amount of. Of, of, of change, but when you really look at the cost, it's not even a cup of Starbucks for a month. I mean, it's very small. So I don't like the percentage as much as I like the rates, but I, I wouldn't skip because. Your, your employees are not skipping wage increases. Your vendors are not skipping their increases and. Metro certainly has its costs that they're passing on as well. So I, I, I appreciate the other commissioner amendments or suggested amendments. But I'll, I, I stick with the staff recommendation.
I'd like to make a comment as well. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And I too appreciate both of these amendments for the same reasons that Commissioner Rogers put forward. I had the opportunity in the last week to talk with several haulers as well. And I was not aware of the disparity of the makeup of their customer base. It made sense to me initially to roll everything up to one, one level. But I, I was not aware of the disproportionate effect that would have on the, the different haulers. It's a hard, frankly, it's a hard pill to swallow to look at a rate change of 11.4% for residential. I really appreciate Commissioner Willie's attempt to, to push that down a bit, but the problem is again. That's pushed down disproportionately on the different haulers. So. And I appreciate Commissioner Phi's amendment. I again, agree with Commissioner Rogers from the standpoint of compassion. But I know that we're looking toward continuing to make sure that our. Businesses are healthy. I think we need to make sure that we can support them through this. Increase that Metro has brought forward. So I'm going to go with the staff recommendation as well. Commissioner Willie or Commissioner Phi, anything to close?
I don't have any other comments. And like I said, I will, rather than propose an amendment to the motion, I think I will just. Not and remain quiet.
Okay. Commissioner Phi, just want to make sure you have the opportunity for any last comments.
Thank you. Same. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Alrighty. Well, we have a motion on the table and a second. With no further motions for amendment. So all those in favor of adopting. Approving the rates proposed by the Department of Health and Human Services by adopting the resolution in an order. Enclosed in our packets, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? Any, if one opposed, okay. No abstentions. So the motion passes four to one to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. That's everything on the action item of today's agenda. Next, we'll move on to oral communications for the five minute section. Commissioner, or excuse me, Clerk Moss. See, there you go. You graduated all.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We have no one signed up.
Okay. All right. So next on the agenda is board announcements. We have one change. We will not be having an AOC District Eight meeting this Friday. Next Monday evening, June 28th, we have a Board of Commissioners Town Hall with a spotlight topic of mental health services. That meeting will start at 6:00 PM. We'll have a short presentation followed by a great Q and A section. I hope community members are. Bringing their questions forward and I think that meeting goes till 7:30 PM. We will not be having board meetings that first week of July. So please don't expect us. Come join us on Tuesday, July 6th, because we won't be here for a Zoom meeting. You'll have to tune back in on Tuesday, July 13th, where we have a work session that starts at 8:30. And then we pick back up with our business meeting. So our new county council will be with us in work session on July 13th. But he won't be in Alan's hot seat until the following week, Tuesday, July 20th. So I know Alan, that you've ensured a great transition and you've got a great team to help Mr. Carr along. But I sure hope he knows to correct me and make sure that I do the right thing for title only, that I don't forget to ask for a motion. And all those other matters that are very important for us to adhere to. I don't mean to make light of them at all. Thursday, okay, thank you. Thursday, July 22nd, we'll be having a roundtable and then our last set of meetings for the month of July. Will be on Tuesday, July 27th, just like today, an afternoon work session and an evening board meeting that starts at 6:30. And I believe we have some members of the commission as well as of our senior staff who are taking some well deserved vacations. So I wish you all wonderful days off. I hope that it will not be blistering hot. During your vacations unless of course you want it to be that way or you're traveling someplace to experience it. So with that, are there any other board announcements for this evening? Nope. And I caught a real quick glance of email as I was changing screens and. Think it was maybe Commissioner Willie who was inquiring about the Hag Lake releases and I think our staff has come through already with an answer. So good, good work, staff.
Madam Chair, oh, Madam Chair. Been past practice for many boards to end our meetings when somebody is leaving after a long tenure and, and respect to their service. So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Dedicate the meeting to Alan Rapier for his many years of service.
What a marvelous suggestion and, and tradition. And there's a second from Commissioner Willie. That's wonderful. So we have a motion and a second to dedicate to tonight's meeting in its full Zoom presence. To our outgoing county council, Alan Rapier. And thank you once again, Alan, for your tremendous years of service, not only here in Washington County, but throughout our wonderful state.
My favorite kind of motion.
All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Way to go, Commissioner Trese for the enthusiasm. I love it. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. So five to zero, excuse me. So unless there are other communications, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn this. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn this final Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Wow.
We just did that, Madam Chair.
We just did it. We just did it.
Dedicated the most, the meeting to you. Now, we're going to close it.
And vote.
So, I stand corrected. So, we don't need another vote. We're going to adjourn now. Thank you very much.
Goodbye. Thank you.
Take good care. See ya.